Uh, Mr. Bobble. Who move to come out here?
Dr. Corbett.
And second?
Miss Kimbrough.
Okay, let's certify, please. Dr. Varley, you started back in session. This is Miss Kimbrough, Miss Womack, Carson, Dr. Corbett, Dr. Gurr, Mr. Polly.
Yes.
Thank you. Third class, all right. Let's stand and people can play their own reason.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I may want you to approve of that agenda.
He said? Dr. Corbett, second. All in favor?
Yeah.
We go to awards, recognitions, and introductions.
Mr. Kennedy, will you ask someone to come in?
Hello, no, 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 you want to go in front of me. Come on right around so that everybody can see how impressive you are. Hello, ladies.
There.
Nope, no, why don't you go right on around that way? That's everybody's round one in. Okay, let's, let's see how many more even. I think that's good, right there. I think. Move back this way a little bit. See, I want everybody to see you, so you have to get in front of me here.
Back.
Back this way, come back this way. I know, I'm not good at, at directions, but start right there with Miss Worman. Let's come back around so that everybody can see you. Because it doesn't matter if they see me or not. I want everybody to see you in all of your glory. There you go. Okay. I think everybody can hear me. This season, these beautiful young middle school ladies who are our middle school basketball team finished the regular season undefeated, eleven to zero, which of course is first place. The young ladies had two rounds of playoffs to win to get to the championship game. The girls finished their season fourteen to zero and conference champions. Each game, the girls dominated and won by ten or more points. These girls worked hard, these young ladies worked hard for the first day of prac- from the first day of practice, and they never stopped working or wanting to learn. Miss Nicole Worman, their fabulous coach, their head coach. They also have Mr. John Robertson and Miss Shaquinta Scott. They all enjoyed working with all of the young ladies all season and cannot wait to see what the future holds for all of you. So I'm going to call your names. I have certificates for all of you, but I'm going to call your names and you're going to wave your hands and tell what position you play. Okay?
Don't look at me.
I don't care because you- I don't know a lot about a lot of sports, but I do understand basketball and positions. So you all can do that for me, right? All right. Kyla Bartstel.
A post.
A post?
Post position.
Post.
A post. Got it, got it, thank you. Let me put my glasses back on.
Stay out where, oh.
Anisha Clark.
I play wing.
Okay.
Guard, yes.
Guard, thank you, so okay. Jaleah Epps.
I play the wing.
Guard. There you go.
Guard. Tanaya Johnson.
I'm a post in the bottom.
Post in the bottom, huh? Forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's see here. Candy Kill Bruce? Did I say that incorrectly, am I good? Did I say it incorrectly?
I.
I am so sorry. Hamaya. Hamaya Kill Bruce.
Guard.
So if I don't say it correctly, don't let me get away with that now. Correctly, okay? They don't like, they don't laugh. No laughing, just tell me so that we can make sure that you are honored correctly because that's important. Zayanna Lockett.
Forward.
Sarah Lucas.
A guard.
Okay, Kami Patterson.
A wing.
A guard.
Kashana Peaks.
Guard.
Aleah Rachel's.
My guard.
Madison Tillerson.
Forward.
And I'm going to say Marlia Watson, is that right?
Yes. Just forward.
Very good, excellent. Did I make sure I got everybody? We are very, very proud of you, uh, which is why you're here. You look fabulous in your purple and golds. And I know that there are lots of parents out there are here to support our children. Thank you so much. I, do we have pictures of them? We have to make sure we get the pictures.
We have plenty of pictures.
We have plenty of pictures of you. Uh, to the board, do you have any questions or comments? Yes.
Now, the purple and gold, but what's a family? What, what is, what's the, what's the meaning behind your T-shirts? I mean, your shirts, the family, what is that?
So, a couple of years ago, um, the boys' team and our team combined as a family. We do everything together. Um, so family was, is our theme. So every year, we get a new family shirt to incorporate. We're just not family on the, on the court, but as a school.
Excellent.
I want to say congratulations to you, every, all of you ladies and your coaches.
Thank you. Miss Worman, thank you so much for all of your years you put in coaching. I know, I've been there. I'm very proud of each and every one of you. And thank you.
Thank you.
Doctor.
Yeah, I, I watch you the, yes. Quarter fun again, semi fun again, and then championship again, okay? I took many pictures.
So to all of our parents, make sure you get all of the pictures. I know you have pictures, I know you did. But take more outside the school board office and know how much we appreciate all that you have done to give these young ladies here. Miss Jeffrey, would you say something?
I, I just would like for a picture to be taken with the board. So with someone who has, I know we all got cameras. So we can have a picture with the board.
Okay.
I think, I think Mr. Osadado was on it. Just, are we standing? I don't know how you want to do it because I, I got mine with her, so I don't know. We want all of your glory to rub off on us. Mr. Osadado's got us over there.
Got a lot of different angles, but I don't know something.
Thank you. And I see our, our little player in the making over here, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, I'm glad. We do have another group of students that we want to recognize so they are not here and we will make sure that their certificates get to their principal and sponsor and/or sponsor. High school forensics. Another great regional competition for Prince Edward Eagles occurred February 12th, 2022. The forensics team traveled to Randolph Henry High School to participate in the regional competition for the James River District. Representing Prince Edward were seniors Mira Mishra and Serena Campbell and juniors Demza Hamza and Jacob Strickler. Each member of the team dedicated time and effort to prepare for this competition. Mira competed in the impromptu speaking category. This category is a high-pressure, right-on-demand competition. Jacob Strickler and Demza Hamza competed in poetry interpretation where they chose pieces of poetry that reflect topics that impact them personally. Serena Campbell competed in the storytelling category. The competitors retell children's stories without the aid of the text. Our Eagles forensic team is coached by Miss Carol Pippin. The team received glowing comments from the judges in all four categories and had two competitors placed to move to the super regionals. Mira Mishra placed second for impromptu speaking and Demza Hamza placed first for poetry interpretation. The forensics team will head back to Randolph Henry High School on February 26th. Clearly, that has passed. On February 26th, Demza Hamza finished second place in poetry interpretation and will move on to the state competition, which will be held on March 26th. Our Eagles demonstrated outstanding sportsmanship and friendliness to each other and to the opposing districts. They certainly are a source of pride for our county and our community. So we will make sure that they also get their certificates. We would also like to, where's Mr.? We would also like to introduce you to, for some of you, Mr. Joe Hines, who made a donation to Prince Edward High School in support of a rowing program. Mr. Hines will share your vis- excuse me, will share the vision and the development of this program at this time. But his donation was very, very generous to us and we wanted to publicly acknowledge and say thank you very much to you, Mr. Hines. So if at this time you'd like to share.
I believe we have the, uh, does he have a mask on or presentation? Okay, got you. So first of all, thank you all for your all this time thing for the recognition. Um, I've been very blessed and there's a couple of unique opportunities that we have here at the county that I think we've leveraged for a multitude of opportunities, including, um, an opportunity for our students to, to bring up, literally participate in an Olympic international sport here in Prince Edward County. Um, a little bit of my, my background, I actually was a club rower at NC State. They started the program the semester before my senior year or last year at school there. So I did it one year. My first purchase, my first paycheck, was actually a rowing machine. Uh, still sitting in my dad's basement. But, um, it's, it's a sport I'm very passionate about. Um, what's unique about Sandy River Reservoir, which I'll talk about in the presentation, is we have the ability to host a 2,000-meter race, which is extremely unusual and it has very little boat traffic because they have a maximum limit of 10 horsepower on it. Um, the sport, once you learn about it, it's an easy sport to fall in love with. Once you start doing it, it's an easier sport to fall in love with as well, too. And what's unique is it literally has changed lives and there's some stories that we talked about in the presentation about how it literally has transformed lives, um, as a whole and, and just the uniqueness of the sport in itself. So, let's see, good. Some reasons I moved forward. Think more?
Yeah, the receivers.
Okay, so to give you a little bit about the background history of rowing as a whole. Um, rowing, the first race, um, it was originally done on the Thames River in England. And basically, they called them horsemen who would transport product up and down the Thames River uh, on behalf of, uh, you know, businesses and whatnot. So that was a major commerce thing. My background is I lead Thames River Economic Development Practice. Um, where what we do is we help our clients grow economic opportunities within their communities either through a data center site or through opportunities like this where it's related to engineering and infrastructure. So it came over the U.S., first reported race in the U.S. was 1756. The first intercollegiate race was 1852, Yale versus Harvard. It became an Olympic sport and, um, in 1900, the second Olympia, it's my understanding, the first Olympia, they, they had something weather-related happen. They weren't able to host it. Uh, in checking out, uh, there's a, a website that's called warspotter.com that tracks all the rowing programs in the country and the world. And there are over 600 high school, Virginia national programs in the country and there are over 61 in Virginia right now. A lot of them in Northern Virginia, Richmond, Downhampton Road, even some out in Southwest Virginia as well, too. So you have a natural built-in competitive, uh, uh, opportunity here. I was in a Awaawa in Richmond, um, a couple of months ago and there was a, a boat pulling, a trailer pulling all the boats, uh, with the, um, with the Awaawa and literally he was trying to navigate and get gas in and out. But they had come down from Northern Virginia, competed in racing James River for that day on a Saturday afternoon. There are over 400 collegiate varsity or club programs, 10 of them in Virginia. And these are Virginia colleges listed, I'm not going to name them all off, but those are legos of those particular colleges, of which some of them are, are varsity crews. Uh, a lot of women's sports or actually full-fledged varsity sports, um, because of Title IX. And actually, UVA's women won the ACC Championship in 2021. Um, so why Sandy River Reservoir? When you look at Sandy River Reservoir relative to all schools, and just so you all know, full disclosure, I'm, I'm, I'm helping give money to all the schools that are program-going. Um, so both high schools, youth school and Prince Edward County Public School will be able to have field boats and, and compete teams as well as Hampton Sydney and Longwood. But the relative convenience of this reservoir is, is pretty phenomenal compared to where other college teams have to go row. Some of them will drive anywhere from 30, 45 minutes away. I'm looking up with the Liberty University coach, Smith Mountain Lake. Liberty team literally hops on a bus at 5:00 in the morning for an hour drive out to their marina at Smith Mountain Lake. They prep the boat, do a 6:30 launch, row for an hour, get back in, clean everything up, put the boats up, and they're back on the road by 8:00 to be on campus by 9:00. So that shows you the level of dedication of a rower and a competitive rower. So why Sandy River Reservoir? You heard a lot about this in the news. It is a public water supply, that's why it was developed. Um, it's a 740-acre reservoir. It was first studied in 1967. Uh, several bond referents were issued, uh, construction was complete in 1988. Congress issued the permit for the reservoir in 1995 and it was opened in 1991, it was opened in 1995. So you're going to hear a lot in the coming, uh, months and news about Sandy River Water Project being constructed or potentially being constructed. So we're in the process of actually building the water system out, which should help, uh, the economic opportunity within the region as a whole, aside from this particular, uh, opportunity. So a couple, a couple of reasons why we think, uh, it's a pretty unique lake. One is a no-wake lake, which is maximum 10 horsepower meter. So the only wake you would have is when, when you're rowing, that really matters because you don't have a lot of freeboard on the side of it. You've got these 18-foot oars that you're sticking out in the water and so you're constantly trying, you know, it's, choppy water is not good for rowing competition. A high school race needs to be about 1,500 meters. We can easily get that on here. Um, a collegiate and Olympic race is 2,000 meters. Uh, the public boat landing, which some of you might be familiar with, is over by the dam. But we could do a finish line about right at the public boat landing. So that would be great because you can send vendors down there. You can put a little grandstand up, parents can watch your, uh, team, teams row. And it's kind of like a horse race. If you've ever been to like one of these horse races where they did a big social event, every 15 or 20 minutes, a horse will come by. So that same thing, how often the finish line comes. So you need somebody filling their time afterwards in that regard. Um, what is unique about it as a whole, as a, as a sport, is teams will travel very far to get competitive rowing time. And, uh, high school or junior rowing teams, that's normally five to six hours. Collegiate teams, nine to 12 hours on average. UVA women travel down to Tampa, Florida to compete in their spring season. They have schedule and they're also flying down to Austin, Texas to compete, uh, an Olympic there, uh, an Olympic-type race there. When you look at the Olympic teams, they're usually like the eight-man or six, uh, eight, eight-woman boats from like, um, University of Washington or Harvard or Yale. So they're, they're pretty big school and collegiate teams are usually going to compete in Olympics. And then we're working with Sandy River Outboard Ventures, Mark Smith and Candy Smith, for those of you who all know them, um, to essentially develop what's eventually going to be a boat dock and boathouse. We haven't quite figured out exactly where else we can go and we still have some steps to go through. But we are heading in that direction and feel very comfortable, um, with where we're going with that. So when you look at these distances and you look around Farmville, and, and I just look at this not just from a, a rowing perspective, but from an economic development perspective as a whole. You know, we're on the center of the East Coast and, um, the, the, the rings on there are 450-mile and 600-mile radius. That's roughly that nine-to-12-hour drive. So when you think about all the colleges and universities that are within that nine-to-12-hour drive, um, that gives you your draw for a collegiate regatta. So while your kids might necessarily be competing in collegiate regatta, that's an awful lot of exposure they get when we have a collegiate regatta. And Liberty University has already expressed an interest in joining with Hampton Sydney and Longwood to host one of those regattas and bring their experience and cachet to the table as far as that's concerned. So, um, there are a number of organizations out there that, uh, that support rowing. US Rowing is probably the biggest one. Um, but you know, it's in the Olympics, they're all there where there's eight-man, four-man, two-man skulls. Um, it's an Olympic sport, it's an Paralympic sport as well, too. Um, so it really is, is a good sport as a whole that you can do, not just from being young, but as you get older, and I'm sure Dr. Varney can attest, anything where you don't have to do a lot of high-impact stuff on your joints is good and rowing is not high-impact on your joints. So talking about Liberty University, um, as I mentioned, I've met with the Liberty coach. She's the blonde on far right in the bottom picture. Her name is Deborah Kraus. Uh, she was a Boston University National Championship Team rower. She rowed for the U.S. Junior National Team. Um, she has coached Liberty to a, uh, national championship at the club level, a four-man, woman, or four-women's, the four-woman boat team won it. And she's already expressed an interest to host a rowing clinic here in Farmville where we can do a soft launch for collegiate and, or college and, and high school students and middle school students interested in rowing. Um, and then she hosts, uh, one of those joint regatta. So I confronted with her yesterday. Um, we're trying to work out the final venue locations, but she's willing to do, uh, one of these rowing clinics on a Saturday, April 23rd, 2022, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Uh, so we'll be sending out additional information for you to push out to your students to get signed up for that. And she's bringing her, um, Liberty has what they have called Community Christian Hours that their students need to achieve before they graduate. And so she can bring her team members down to help run this clinic and work with all the students. So it's, it's good exposure all the way around for a number of different people. The Vespoli rep, um, Vespoli, about 80% of the competitive boats are made by this company called, uh, Vespoli. But I've talked to him, he's good friends with Liberty Coach. He has agreed to work out a deal to help us buy quality boats. So he says that like the Ivy League schools, like, um, Harvard, Yale, Columbia, stuff like that, they'll trade their boats in every three to five years, give or take. And sometimes they don't need to refurbish the boats. So he said he's willing to, when they do a trade-in, he's willing to sell them to one of the schools down here at trade-in value plus $500. Okay, so the money that I gave, hopefully that's enough to buy your first boat. And then, uh, my commitment is to continue to give additional money until you all can afford about two or three boats as a team and that should get you set up initially, uh, to be able to run a program. Um, he does, uh, he does want to grow that rowing community. Um, he is a rower himself, he's an owner of Vespoli, the rap is. And so he's going to do everything he can to help us and he's committed to that. So this is just a picture of some of the basics of what a boat looks like. A, a single-person shell is about 27 foot long. An eight-man, uh, boat is 62 feet long. So it gives you an idea of the dimensions. Um, but basically, the rowers are rowing, they're facing backwards as they're rowing. You have what's called Coxon, who sits in the boat and calls it out. And that's usually a, a small, petite person with a big lungs and a big voice. And it's just basically letting them have it, saying, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, you gotta do it for your friend, you gotta do it for your mother, you gotta do it for your dad. But pushing them really, really hard to get that 2,000 meters because the competitive race time is anywhere between six and seven minutes. So it's just an all-out sprint for that six or seven minutes. So there's some history behind it. Um, The Boys in the Boat is a book that came out, uh, I'm not sure, it was probably 2016 or 2018. But it's about the story of the 1936 Berlin Olympics where the University of Washington team, uh, went there to compete. They were a bunch of logging town, uh, young men, uh, grew, growing up during the Great Depression, very poor. Um, but they got the University of Washington and they got on the rowing team and they, they, this was just their opportunity to really, uh, make a difference. They ended up, uh, competing against all the Ivies on the East Coast, which was unheard of. They set a world record qualifying for the Olympics in 1936. And then they went in and, uh, in front of Hitler, in the 1936 Olympics, they beat the heavily favored German boat. Uh, if you look at that picture, uh, that's the finish line with the circle around it where the boat goes across it, right against grandstands. USA finished first, they beat Italy by .6 seconds and beat Germany by 1.0 seconds. And George Clooney, they're, they're putting a film together for it. George Clooney is the one who is directing it, but that's yet to be released. We're waiting for that announcement anytime soon. Another story is really cool and this just came out, I believe, in 2018. It's called A Beautiful Thing and it's by a gentleman named Arshay Cooper. Rival gang members in the west side of Chicago, um, which was one of the worst parts of Chicago at the time, ended up coming together to form the first all-African-American public high school rowing team. And, uh, a gentleman had decided that he wanted to help this high school out in the middle of what was the worst section of town. And literally they bought a boat into the gym and introduced a bunch of people to it. But I watched a documentary last weekend and that was produced by Grant Hill, um, the NBA player as well as Dwyane Wade. And ninth wonder is Patrick Darnard Dothead or Doghead, how you pronounce his name. He actually lives in Durham, North Carolina. And then I put the, the dude's connection together with him and Grant Hill. Um, but this was narrated by Academy Award winner Common. It was directed by Mario Amazio. She's a, uh, filmmaker, she was 1992 U.S. Olympic rower. It was nominated 2020 best docu-, uh, sports documentary out there and one of the best films of 2020 by Empire. And, uh, I, that's YouTube link on there, it's like a two-minute introduction, but it's an hour and a half documentary and I highly recommend it. It's a very moving, compelling story, not just about the sport itself, but just about how people can come together when they're living in these odd situations that are not very good options for these young men. So the most famous regatta in terms of economic potential and opportunity, the most famous regatta in the United States is called the Head of the Charles Regatta. So this gives you an idea of the passion that is behind the sport. Um, 2019, the last pre-COVID race, uh, had an estimated impact, economic impact of $88 million for the greater Boston area. It is the world's largest two-day regatta. It's hosted by Cambridge, Massachusetts, which is literally across the river from Boston. At 225,000 spectators, 11,000 athletes, 2,300 boat entries, 800-plus schools, universities, and organizations participated with over 24 countries represented. So again, that just gives you an idea of the passion. We'll never have that here, but that doesn't mean that our students can't go compete in this race in the future. So I have what I call my dream headlines. And this is my vision for rowing here in Prince Edward County, uh, with all the schools combined. Uh, Farmville, Prince Edward County Public Schools placed their first row in the U.S. Olympic team. Row received a collegiate scholarship following stellar high school career at P E C P S. Uh, Richmond Times-Express, U.S. Rowing hosts the U.S. National Championships of Sandy River. I think that's a very real possibility. Farmville and Prince Edward see an unprecedented economic impact. And then Virginia Business. I think we do have the potential to get a row, a U.S. Olympic or U.S. Paralympic Training Center here or Training Site here, um, that Hampton Sydney or Longwood can essentially host. But my hope is that Longwood and Hampton Sydney will receive some type of joint funding to open a center like that, uh, on the Sandy River Reservoir. So with that being said, um, I am an engineer for a living. As I say, we put a man on the moon. You give us enough time and money, we can do anything. And Prince Edward County has a very strong connection to putting the first man on the moon as well, too. Um, in this business, how much money and how much time? But I really think this is a program we can get off-ground. And I think in 20 years from now, I think it's going to be absolutely phenomenal, the impact it's going to have on the lives of students here and elsewhere and, and the, the impact it's going to have on the entire region. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So again, Mr. Hines, I want to thank you for the donation that you have made. I also like to thank you for recognizing very clearly the potential of all of our students and all of the children in Prince Edward County. So we really do appreciate it and we're really excited. And right back there, we have Mr. Rodney Kane, who is our athletic director.
Awesome.
So he will be the person
Who, who is?
Who is helping move this along and making this happen.
Got you.
He's all into it, I see.
That's right.
Again, thank you so much.
Can I take a privilege and have Miss Candy take a picture of you and I?
Absolutely.
With my phone and your phone, yeah. Or do you want some front of it, Jim?
Yeah, I want to come up front.
And I can answer any questions y'all might have, too.
Thank you. So do you all have any questions? Again, thank you for your donation. Thank you for coming today.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you.
I'll take care of it.
And the last recognition that we have today, we just wanted to take a minute or two to recognize that on Wednesday, February twenty third, twenty twenty-two, the county of Prince Edward and the town of Farmville presented to me as representative of Prince Edward County Public Schools, a proclamation to jointly proclaim that this day, that day, is Local Schools Appreciation Day. And it was a wonderful activity and ceremony in front of the courthouse steps. Fugle School was represented, as well as some of our other schools, local schools in the area. And I just wanted to share, thank you. It's, it's the Local Schools Appreciation Day. And I'm not sure that all of you were aware, well, you were aware because I sent the information, but because some of you didn't have the opportunity to be there, I wanted to share it with you. It was beautiful. Dr. Pride read the proclamation. And again, a wonderful acknowledgement of, of our young people, as well as the adults who helped move them to success. Thank you. And I'm going to give this to you, Dr. Varner, just so that you can look at it and pass it over. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. We're going to continue our meeting. Consent agenda. Have approval of the consent agenda. We have motion.
I'm going to get ready for the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Third, second. All right. All in favor? All right. All right. We look at action items. We'll start with the after prom committee request.
And that would be me. This is one of my many jobs, is being the head of the after prom committee. And each year I come to the school board. And while we do raise money for the after prom, we like to use that money for the food, the prizes to get the kids to come. And what I usually ask the school board to give to us as the after prom committee is the cost of the bowling alley, which is where we have the after prom at. And that includes all the bowling that they want, the games that they want, plus their shoes, their bowling shoes and everything. And the cost this year, it has gone up just a little bit last time, which was two years ago that we had those. Almost three years, was fifteen hundred dollars. They asked for seventeen fifty this year, and I was like, seventeen fifty? But if you think of, it is still going to be, we usually have at least two hundred kids there. So you're still talking about less than nine dollars a kid for the entire night, for our student for the entire night. So my request in the letter is, again, for if the school board could help out and pay for the bowling alley that night for us, I would appreciate it. If not, even a portion of it would help. So thank you very much for your consideration.
We have a.
And if you have any questions, the forward request.
Yeah, second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Temple. And I just have to say, this is a very exciting time. The students are very excited that they will have a prom this year, so.
Okay, we'll go on to the next item. Appropriation of state federal funds.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mrs. Carson, school board chair, board members, and Dr. Johnson. This evening, I come before you seeking approval for the school board to request from the board of supervisors to appropriate additional state and federal funds in the amount of one hundred twenty eight thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars to the school operating budget for the FY twenty one, twenty school year. These funds include, this appropriation is new, which is a continuing education support grant of a hundred thousand dollars. Additional appropriations for the Title One Part D Neglected and Delinquent, ten thousand dollars. The Virginia Middle School Teacher Corps Grant, five thousand dollars. And an additional appropriation of three, thirteen thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars for mentor teacher funds. These are additional state funds, which makes our grand total of twenty eight million, eight hundred thirty thousand, three hundred seventy dollars and ninety eight cents.
Any questions, Miss Jones? Board members?
So we are recommending that the school board request from the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors to appropriate additional funds to the school operating budget for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year.
I'd like to make a motion that we, that we appropriate, that the Prince Edward County Board Supervisors appropriate that amount of nine hundred twenty eight thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars to our budget.
I'll second it. All right. Motion second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Jones. School calendar?
This is the second read for the school calendar. Thank you to all of you who shared comments or asked questions regarding the calendar. We appreciate that. There is, as I promised, the very last document is the pre-work, the pre-week work schedule per school. So we intend to, of course, post that as well. And then the back of the calendar, we made sure that we double checked some of the emergency makeup days. So we, again, appreciate the comments and notes as it is related to the calendar. So we are asking at this time, we are recommending that the school board approve the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three P E C P S school calendar.
I make the motion that we approve the twenty two, twenty three school calendar. Second it? Second? Discussion.
Mr. Temple? I'm so in favor of the calendar, and thank you so, I said that at the last meeting. I think the calendar is extremely teacher friendly. I was disappointed, and I wanted to say it out loud, that on the pre-week schedule, that out of the six workdays, that the teachers will be given, that none of the three schools were able to find one full day out of those six days that they could be in their room all day long. And hopefully, we can take a look at that. Because I'm a firm believer, the teachers need at least one full day in their rooms. Like other than that, I think the calendar is really good.
That's awesome.
How many total days per semester?
Let's see if I remember. Eighty, eighty-nine, ninety-one. Eighty-nine in first semester, ninety-one in second. Any other questions, comments? There's a motion on floor. All in favor? Thank you.
Every year, I bring to you policy J E C dash R, which is our regulation, actually. This motion allows us to waive out of county tuition for any student that is interested in attending Prince Edward County Public Schools. So I'm asking that we, it is recommended, I am recommending that the school board approve to waive the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three non-resident tuition fee for students who enroll and reside out of Prince Edward County.
Okay, I move the motion to approve twenty twenty three out of county tuition waiver for non-county residents.
I'll second. Second, Mr. Paul, thank you. All right. Any questions, comments? All in favor? We would code conduct at last, at our last meeting, we had copies of the Prince Edward Code of Conduct for school board members and the V S B A ones. And we need to sign off on the Prince Edward County Code of Conduct for school board members. We have that listed. We could pass it around, or make sure you sign it before you leave. So just make sure you sign it before you leave tonight, please. Were there any questions about the Prince Edward County Public School, School Board Members Code of Conduct? We need a motion to.
I move that we adopt the school board's Board of Conduct as presented.
I second it. All in favor?
We will let you down, Mr. St. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving to Beth.
That is the twenty twenty, twenty twenty two V S B A Business Honor Roll. We talked a little about this at our last meeting, and I asked for recommendations. And Gemini was, Gemini Inc. was recommended. So we are asking that the school board members approve Gemini Inc. to be nominated for the Business Honor Roll for Prince Edward County Public Schools.
Who will be approved, Gemini Inc. to recognize the Business Honor Roll for Prince Edward County Public Schools?
Second. Dr. Varner, second. All in favor? Thank you. I G.
At our last meeting, our, excuse me, at our last budget work session, we discussed extensively health insurance. And one of the topics that came up was whether or not we wanted to put the health insurance request for proposal out into the community. So we did not get to the point where we actually made a decision. We did not have a forum at that time. But I need to know whether that's something that we want to do or not. Mr. Rosenthal, we did it a few years ago, pre-COVID, three, four years ago. Mr. Rosenthal would be the one who does most of the work for us. He usually charges between four and five thousand dollars to put out the R F P and then to go through. He's also the one who goes through all of the information and does the presentation to the board. So I did not know what finally we wanted, but I am asking for discussion and a decision around whether or not we will put out an R F P for health insurance.
Comments from the board, questions? Mr. Temple? It is my understanding, Dr. Johnson, that in our last discussion of this, it was determined through a presentation by Ms. Jones and some other numbers and things of that nature, that the difference in what we were talking about for teachers and for administrators was six to seven dollars.
Yes.
Okay. Our focus really was trying to have a level playing field. And at the rate that Mr. Rosenthal is going to charge, we would possibly be giving up money that we could use to do what we, what we were, are really trying to do, which is to give our teachers some kind of recognition. So I, and I, I really kind of think in terms of the outpour of funds just to put it out in the market.
There are so many other health insurance companies besides Anthem, United Healthcare, Humana, just to name a couple. And I think we are doing ourselves a disservice not to make sure that Anthem is the most competitive with as good of benefits. Because again, you know, in order to try to be competitive in recruiting and retaining teachers, it feels imperative to me that our health insurance, that we get the premium for individual, adult, or with family and with a dependent as low as we possibly can. And so I would be in favor of at least exploring what other companies have to offer besides just Anthem.
Board members, comments? Mr. Paul?
Yeah, after our discussion at the last meeting, I attended, I had a considerable amount of thoughts about our health coverage. And, you know, I agree that, you know, we need to have other companies, you know, present their programs to us. And then we can make an informed decision on what is the best fit for our employees. And I also think Dr. Johnson's comment about taking something away from something, from somebody that has had it for a number of years would probably be not the right route to take. But there can be other incentives put in for people like teachers that don't have a lot of amenities, that can be incentives for them and can help retention and can help perhaps bring other teachers on board. So I just wanted to make that comment to, to see, to help perhaps encourage other board members to look at some other plans and some other possibilities so that we make the best possible choice that we can.
Other comments from board members?
Doctor.
I have one question. Many years ago, I taught at another high school, and my premium was low. It's because the other school board provided some money to cover it. In the heaven, I had a heart surgery, I had, okay? I looked at the bill, it is about one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. But I don't need, I only paid six hundred dollars. That's pretty good. So sometimes I heard somebody said, we're just highly doubtful, low premium to charge teachers. But I think for me, right now, I have another, my wife covers me for another insurance. So I have to pay up to six thousand dollars, then the insurance will pay me. So there are, my, I think, basically, I think, if possible, we just let the school to provide a little bit more to cover the premium so we don't need to worry about the high deduction. That's what we are paying.
Other comments? How do we, we, I'm sorry.
Did Mr. Rosenthal have a recommendation the other night?
He did not. In fact, we spoke to him right before this meeting. He still did not have a recommendation, one way or the other. He will do whatever is the will of the board. He will do whatever is the will of the board.
Yeah, I mean, we've done this a number of times over the years, and Anthem has always been the best, uh, best coverage and best rates. Keep in mind, my understanding is with our present plan, if we back out of Anthem, there's still a potential that we have to pay Anthem because of the mechanisms of how they, uh, just the present policy. So it's not a cut and dry, we're done.
He did not talk about that, but that is true, that we have to make sure that we, you know, are all paid up with whatever we, we may owe.
So it's been several years. I'm not opposed to doing it, but I, I, uh, none of you should get your hopes up.
Just say it again, repeat.
Say that again.
I'm not opposed to doing an R F P at all, uh, but it is expensive, number one, and number two, don't get your hopes up.
Could you, could you explain a little bit more about, uh, pay Anthem more even if we decide not to go with them?
Yeah, I, I can't give you a complete explanation, Mr. Rosenthal can, but because of the type of policy we have, if there's a number of outstanding claims, then it is not just we end today. And that's a calculation that Blue Cross does, or Anthem, whatever you call it.
I agree, Dr. Folling, that it's, it's likely, I don't know if it's likely, but it's possible that we're not going to get any better, um, health insurance coverage than we have right now. It's a little mind-blowing that it feels like Anthem has you kind of, um, in crosshairs that we can't get out of it, you know, that is what you're in, you're sort of in. But I, I still think, um, that it's worth taking a look at companies that offer more than, I mean, but Anthem only offers the two fifty, five hundred, and a thousand. There are no other options in terms of deductibles and copays. Those are, those are the three, that's it, I ask. And so, you know, to explore, and I, I, Dr. Folling, I one hundred percent agree with you that a policy that has a six thousand dollar deductible is really not much of a policy. I also believe that a policy that has a thousand or twelve hundred or fifteen hundred dollar deductible is a really good compromise if we could get our premiums down, especially for family and, um, employee and child. And so I, I, I'm in favor of doing, taking a, taking a look, especially if it's been three or four years since we've done it, it could have changed. We may end up right back with where we are now, but, um, I, I, I think we need to look at companies that offer more options than just those three. And then we can only pick two of them, we're only allowed to do two. Uh, we can't even offer all three to them. And, um, so anyway. I, I move that we do an R F P for the health insurance.
Motion on floor, we do, we need a second?
A second.
Second, second. All in favor?
A little more discussion.
Okay, more discussion?
I, I wish I could have made it, but unfortunately the timing did not work. But I'm a state employee now, and right now the state offers two different plans. Is that, do you know if that's a possibility?
It's not, I ask.
It's so bizarre.
Yes, it is. It is.
The only thing I'm concerned about is, is the amount of coverage that you're going to get. That's what I'm concerned about. Recently, my husband works for a utility place in New Jersey, and we had great dental insurance. So they decided that we pay up on premiums and they reimburse us. And I chose a dental program that I thought was excellent. But I found out it is absolutely lousy. It covers very, very little, so I want to pay more out of pocket, and I'm about ready to cancel them because they are not covering the things that meet my needs as a person who's paying for that insurance. And that's what I'm concerned about. What is the, what is the coverage? What are they going to cover for the, for the people who are being, using their insurance? I don't want to have to pay a lot of money out of pocket if I don't have to. So we have to be very careful if we look, look at what's, if they have, they have very low, very low premiums, but they don't cover. Is it worth it? And that's what I want to say.
All right. Any other discussions? Comments? Is there a motion on floor?
No more questions. If we do this, if we do the R F P, are we looking at changing the insurance carrier? Are we just looking?
Changing, do you change it this year or looking to change it next year? Is that your question?
Yes.
So I believe it was June, you have to, June, to, to, to sign off on a renewal. So that's why we have to, to get this going, and then once you have the information, then the board can decide whether they just, whether the board is just interested in the information, say, of the information, or in fact the board wants to act on the information. And the action would be to choose another insurance provider or to stay with the provider that we have. Those are the two options. But whatever the decision is, we just have to get going so that we don't miss, just in case we opt to keep the insurance that we have, that we don't miss that June date.
So if we, if we choose to do that, we have to pay five thousand dollars for the four.
When we did it, uh, three or four years ago, um, so, so that's why I'm putting it out there now, because Mr. Rosenthal's not here. It is likely that it will be between four and five thousand dollars. If it was four thousand dollars three or four years ago, then I'm sure it's somewhere between four and five now. Mr. Rosenthal is very reasonable, but there will be a cost associated with it. So I just wanted to make that clear.
I, I just think that, um, the, with so many transitions that are going on right now and the instability of so many different things, that, if we, if we put, put it out there right now, um, we, I think it would, who would want to do it later, so, later than sooner? Because I just think, because I think if we did it next year, I mean, if we did it now, uh, the results that we'd get is probably going to say to stay where we are, just because of all of the, uh, and if we're really wanting to see, I think if we waited later, we would, um, we would probably get more of an answer. I think, because there's so many, so, everything's so in the air right now, the economy and all of those things, I just think it's, when we, we get a favorable quarterback, it's just going to be, that, that's my guess. And I, I think it's a good idea, but I just think that, um, my, my thoughts are, and then next year we're not going to be able to do it if we already got this year. That's just my opinion.
I guess by putting me behind, we do it, it's kind of following you there, we do it this year, it isn't...
Well, you know, because, well, if you look at the cost, and I think, well, the, our, the, that, when we went down, our, uh, we were paying less, we got a credit this year. That, that's an option. And I don't think that that's comparable to everybody else. And, and, and then when we end up having to pay, uh, pay our way back out of it, we would lose then. And, um, you know, and then I, it just looks like the, you know, with all the other things that are going on, I just think that we're going to end up still, I, I just, you know, I, I think it's, you know, uh, I'm not opposed to it, but I just think that, um, you know, we would, we're more likely to get more bang for our buck if we wait another year. I just think that's my setup. Uh, and, um, if we're going to put it out there, but, um, because of the, so many things that are going on right now that can influence it, um, you know, you, you might do something that saves us a time and may be good for it, but, you know, I, I'm more inclined to stay and, and, and try to put it out next year if it's an issue, you know?
My whole purpose for even bringing up and harking on health insurance is strictly a, um, and I, I, I want everybody to know I'm in favor of really solid health insurance that is, got great coverage. But Anthem and Blue Cross Blue Shield are not the only companies out there that offer really great insurance with really great coverage. We don't have really any tools at our disposal right now to recruit for the many, many openings that we are going to have this spring and this summer. Our salaries are going to be right about, while they're hopefully going to increase, they're probably going to be about where they are. Our health insurance is some of the highest in the region. And so, I mean, I, as a, a potential employee coming here, um, and I, why would I come here? I'm not going to make any more money and I'm paying more for my benefits. Or a teacher who works here can go to a, a county and their health insurance costs them three or four hundred dollars a month less, that is a five, full five thousand dollar increase in pay in addition to making more money. And so I think we're being short-sighted if we do not at least try to see if there's something better than the current Anthem program. And I, I mean, I'm sorry that they only offer those three programs and they don't offer anything else, because I think it's great coverage. But that's what it is. And, um, so I think waiting, uh, we might get better results a year from now, but we also may be sitting here with a zillion openings that we can't fill, and this could have been an opportunity to have, um, set us apart just a little bit.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just following, I've got a great deal of respect for Dr. Corbett's opinion, you know, and he may very well be right about the uncertainties that we're facing today throughout the country, throughout the world at that matter. You know, and waiting a year may very well be the best way to go. However, when I think about the teachers that are in the trenches right now, they may need relief today. And if we can provide some kind of relief to them today when they need it most desperately, then I think it's our responsibility, it's, it's our obligation to do that. I think we should check on other companies and see what they offer. I think we also need to contact the surrounding counties and see what coverage they offer their teachers and how they can offer their insurance to their, uh, employees at a cheaper rate than we do. What can this, what does a school pay to, uh, for their teachers, uh, and what do we pay as far as their health insurance is concerned? You know, let's make a comparison there between the surrounding counties. Evidently, we're not doing what the other counties are doing if, if they're, uh, if, if the teachers there are, and all the counties are paying less than what teachers here pay. You know, I think we ought to check all aspects of, of what it's costing and see how we can make changes to create an atmosphere or create a, a, an air, a, a way that we can provide the best possible workplace that people will want to come and stay. And, you know, we, we could wait a year and it might be better, but how do we know if we don't look? And the people today, I think, in Prince Edward County need help. And, you know, it, it may be a waste of money to a degree, but we don't know unless we try. It might be an opportunity. We need to look at it. That's my opinion.
I think, I think, I appreciate your opinion. If we look at other districts and see what they pay, what I want to look at is coverage. What does it cover? And that's what's important to me. You know, if you pay a little bit more, you may get better coverage. So if we do that, we just tend to do that, then we have to look at what kind of, what kind of benefits that we see from the insurance. If God pays for insurance, I'm not getting good benefits and not worth a nickel. But if we do this, we have to make sure we look at the coverage. And that's, that's what I mean, I would go, if the board want to do this, I'll go for this, but we have to, we look, we have to look at coverage. Because we had, we had problems with our school advisors many years ago, who were complaining about the cost of our insurances and what we're giving, and then want us to do privately. We couldn't do that because we're too big.
Well, I wasn't...
If you remember that. I know you were, I was here, Dr. White was here.
I was.
And Dr. Port was here. They're going to hold us accountable for that, taking that right now.
I was just going to say that we will make sure that we, if, if this is something that the board does, that we would make sure that we emphasize the board's concerns and, and priorities.
Coverages.
Yeah, I'm, we need to, yeah, sorry. Uh, there's a motion on floor. Not to do any more. No?
Yes. Your idea is... I think we just, we talked, we talked...
Yeah, it's been motioned. So motion, we just say that motion again?
Yes, I move that we request an R F P for, uh, health insurance, um, to get more bids, to be able to look at it before the deadline of June the 24th, before we have to make a decision about Anthem.
All right. I need a second.
Of course.
You have a second. Okay, thank you. All right. All in favor?
Can you go ahead and tell, please, so, so?
The question is out there.
Is it unanimous?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And just as a FYI, in the past, that, that date with Anthem, you could request a delay.
They said we couldn't.
And this, yeah, this year he said that, uh, same thing you just said in the past, we could request a delay. We cannot this year, there is no, there is no delay. So June 24th is the deadline.
We have to come with that next one.
So, well, we will get on, we will call him, uh, back this evening, what, first thing in the morning?
All right. All right, it's time for, uh, it's actually past 5:30, but it's time for public participation. Blake? How are you today?
I'm doing well.
Good. How's Steve? Your name and address?
I'm sorry, may I take this off to speak?
Yes, you may.
Sorry, didn't want to presume there. Josh Blakely, 438 Timber Creek Drive in Farmville, Virginia. Um, and as you can see, I have my buddies here with me this evening. When mom is out of town, then they get to tag along to the school board meeting. Um, and I, I did also want to say that I so appreciate the discussion you all just had. It sounds like everyone may have different understandings of what the priorities are, but it also sounds like the top priority are our people and how to care for them. And so that is a huge testament to your focus, um, on the people that are doing the hard work around here. So, um, kudos and good job, keep up the good work on that front. I also wanted to acknowledge and thank you for your participation in the recent subcommittee hearing related to the tax referendum. While that effort appears stalled at the moment, it was heartening to see so many Prince Edward officials on the live stream. But as I asked when we first started talking about the tax referendum, I'm asking again, what is the backup plan? I expected to have to argue to the public this year that a new tax was ultimately helpful, but that argument is no longer needed at the moment. Now I'm back here again, asking for you to continue work with the county board to find funding for renovations that we all know we need. So what is the plan? Meanwhile, since I spoke to you last, the citizens of Prince Edward County, your constituents, have not been complacent. We have called state senators, members of the House, and the governor's office to advocate for that failed tax referendum and for funding in our state budget. Over 400 concerned members of the public signed a letter to our lawmakers advocating for funding. Citizens from Prince Edward County participated in a march in downtown Richmond with members of other localities to draw attention to our needs. News of Prince Edward County and the conditions of our schools has made it to the airwaves of Channel 6, 8, and 12 News, as well as onto the front page of the Richmond Times-Dispatch. Listeners to W R I R in Richmond have heard about the leaking ceilings and crumbling Listeners to WRIR in Richmond have heard about the leaking ceilings and crumbling sinks. Word has gotten out that something is wrong here, and to borrow the title of a book I think we all know, all eyes are on Prince Edward County. But I suspect you all know about this too. You too are consumers of media, so I suspect you've seen these and other efforts to raise the profile of our plight here. So, I'd like to close my remarks today by bringing to your attention some of the conversations you likely aren't privy to. I've heard from some parents who are looking to get pediatricians and doctors involved to discuss the negative health impacts of the current conditions. What sort of press coverage might result in such an assessment by a medical professional? I've heard from others who are looking to contact building inspectors and are throwing around words like condemned. While I recognize that there is likely a technical definition, the standards of which I am unsure of, I'm also confident such an allegation would be an issue for this board to address quickly. I've heard from still others speculating about a possible class action lawsuit. Again, I'm not a lawyer, nor do I report to be qualified to provide legal advice, but I'm confident such a filing, even if unsuccessful, would draw attention quickly. What all of these whispered conversations say to me is that there is great frustration and indeed anger fomenting right now. The citizens are dusting off their old civics textbooks and looking around for the legal levers to pull to get their elected representatives to make a change. We've tried advocating and calling for change, we've protested and made noise, we are using our voices to stand up for the least among us, our children. And now, the people are feeling demoralized and downtrodden, and I suspect you are too. And so, I ask again, as I did at the start of these remarks, what is the plan? What is the plan to get out of this current situation? Something has to give here, and at the rate this is getting addressed, I fear it's the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay, also, is there anyone here wanting to speak on the public terms of the budget? Well, we're going to close that hearing, then we'll speak and move on to the calendar. No, 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 I got to go back, sorry. Non-action items, okay, that's where we do it.
Number 10.
Non-action, special education annual plan.
We share annually our special ed plan with the state, and before doing that, we always make sure that we share with you so that you know what, where we're moving. And Dr. Wallace will present that to you tonight.
Good morning.
Good.
Good morning, oh my gosh.
God, we're all done.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Excuse me, let me start again. Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Dr. Johnson and members of the school board. I am no Ruth Williamson, but I am going to do my best to present to you a first read, the components of the local special education annual plan, which is our regular Part B flow-through application, which my law must be presented to the school board and approved for, before applying. There, go down one more? No, oh, I'm on one, sorry.
One more.
One more, there you go, right there, you're good, you're good. Okay, Mrs. Williamson did prepare the presentation, and, you know, within our application, our application would serve students who are ages 2 through 21 years of age, who are identified with disabilities and currently are provided service under 11 different categories, of which the, the top five categories are listed on the slide as specific learning disabilities, other health impairments, autism, speech-language impairments, and developmentally delayed, in that particular order, with SLD being the most, the highest incident of category, followed by other health impairment. 12% or the remaining 12% fall into the other six categories, of which are much smaller numbers. We have seen an increase in enrollment. With the December 1 child count, we identified 262 students, and that is what our funding would be based on. However, Mrs. Williamson did say that our actual number is already higher than 262, our current number, is higher than 262, we're at about 274, because there is a lag between when December 1 happens and when the application is due in May. Last year, we were at 242 students in our December 1 child count. And then, we will, of course, continue to adhere to our state identification guidelines, we utilize the state's process for that, and so, our enrollment and our child count is in line with the expectations of the state. Next. You'll see that with an increase in number, there comes an increase in local and state funding and the MOE that's listed in our application. And so, that will increase from last year at a million 804 to a million 825, almost 26, an increase of 21,195. And our federal flow-through, which is the application that is included in your packet, will be for 743,762.78, or thereabout, because that is the anticipated number, VDOE after a certain period of time, they do do a recapulation and that amount could increase or decrease based on their funding. So, we always, when we apply for grants, it's always a projection. You also have in your packets, I believe probably under exec, well, maybe it's under public content, is the special education plan specifically for our flow-through funds. And this has not changed significantly from what you have seen in the past. Are there any questions, Miss Ma'am?
Does the 262 include, is that just children with IEPs, or does it also include children with 504s?
It is, well, it's, it's IEPs.
So, it, so it does not include any child that just has a 504?
I don't believe so, but I can verify that with Ms., Ms. Williamson.
That's a lot, if it's just IEPs.
Yes, but it does include our speech-language impairments, which that makes up about 30 of those students.
Okay.
And so, sometimes, you know, those, that is a lot, yes ma'am?
Yes.
Other questions? Do you think that the increase may be, maybe increase in enrollment, if nervous that we are?
The increase is due to students transferring in from other counties. The increase is also due to some preschool students who have been identified, who are age 2, who we already know that we will be serving next year, and we have had some that actually have come onboard this year. We, we just enrolled a two-year-old a few weeks ago. So, the increase is due to early identification, which are those children that are below kindergarten age, 2 through below kindergarten age, and then also an increase due to transfers. We do have a lot of foster children, for example, that may be coming from another county that are under foster care in Prince Edward County, and then we serve them in that way. We also have just a lot of transfer students that come from neighboring school divisions for various reasons. And she did say that she believed that the pandemic has probably exacerbated these numbers as the trend across the state and the nation. We've had a lot of younger students in elementary school identify, probably with the specific learning disabilities recently. And when I say recent, I mean last year.
Any other questions, Dr. Wallace? This is the first reading, so it will be back next one?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace.
Thank you.
But, Dr. Wallace?
That, Mr. Paul, that before?
Could, um, now, is there any, can you give us like some of those numbers, like the, like the ones that are, I mean, how many of them were?
Yes, sir.
In each category?
Yes, sir. Specific learning disabilities, we have 69. Other health impairment, 67, and this is of the 262. Autism, 47, speech-language impairment, 30, and developmental delay, 29. The other, you know, that's the 88%, so the other 12%, I cannot tell you what the six other categories are, but they would, they would vary. So, we might have one student here, one student there, and we typically don't share numbers that go out there.
I have a question. Do you, I, Ms. Williamson, we know, but which area has been the biggest increase from last year, or lack, or you said, or she said a lot, the students in that specific area, the increase, and which of, one of those five areas?
The top two.
The top two?
Specifically, she told me that SLD, specific learning disability, has been, you know, identified on the rise, probably likely due to the pandemic.
What about the autism now?
I, I think in general, autism has probably been on the rise, you know, as a trend, but I don't know from last year or this year. But I'll ask her to provide that information for you for next time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions?
I have, excuse me, I have one.
Okay.
Emotionally dysfunctional disturbed children. Have you seen any increase in that category?
That's not one of the top five, so I kind of ask her specifically. I know that we do have, you know, we do have some that are ED, that are emotionally disabled, yes ma'am, but I don't know if it has become, if it's an increase due to the pandemic, if that's what your question is. I'd have to, for any of the increases, because she didn't give me the data from last year to this year, I don't want to speak and say, yes, we do.
I'd like to have the numbers of last year and this year on develop, developmental delay.
Sure, I'll just have to provide it for all.
That's what I was about to say, if we're going to provide comparisons, we might as well do them for all categories.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to number 11, information items.
As we all know, locally as well as nationally, there is a concern about teacher shortage. And we, this year, also suffered from teacher shortage in some of our classrooms. We have not, of course, taken this lightly, and we have been very active in trying to, attempting to recruit. So, Ms. Eens Walton, our Director of Human Resources, is going to share with you some of the things that we are doing to recruit, some of them are new, or most of them actually are new things. The career affairs are not new, but there are other strategies that we are using. So, at this time, we'd just like to share some of the recruitment strategies and answer any questions that you need.
Good evening, Ms. Carlson, School Board Chair, board members and Dr. Johnson. As Dr. Johnson's giving us an overview on recruitment, we know it's important, yes. You may move to the next slide. It is important to the growth and success of Prince Edward County Public Schools. The goal is to attract and retain individuals who have the skills and attributes for positions posted. That being said, several marketing and recruitment strategies have been put in place, were currently posted on our website, Prince Edward County Public School website, K through 12, JobSpot website, and that connects with every district in the country. Teach Virginia, teaching jobs currently posted in Virginia, another website. Handshake and Simplicity, that is the number one way college students find our positions posted here, and there are several positions out there currently posted on college websites. Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, and Twitter. Currently, we have our social media, technology team is posting those on the website for us, but also I'm looking into Hootsuite, that is a platform that will reach all of our social media sites all at one time. Instead of jumping around to several sites, Hootsuite would actually capture everything all at one time. Indeed, that is a worldwide employment website, all of our jobs filter onto that. Local churches, sorority and fraternity networks, libraries and Chamber of Commerce websites locally here. Additional platforms and resources, Virginia Press, which is the State Virginia website, and it reaches over 105 newspapers, 1.45 million readers, and for the month of February, our logo has touched over 100,000 websites, and also 213 clicks on all of our job boards. So, we do have teachers, educators looking at our job postings. HBCU Connect, Historically Black Colleges and Universities, NIMNET, a nationally resourced organization assisting recruitment of diverse teachers as well. Purple Briefcase, it connects, engage, and recruit with colleges as well. It's another service engine that actually reaches out to colleges across the state, also across the country. Virginia Farmer Commission, radio announcements, and we're also looking at additional radio announcements regionally, so they would know they can apply here as well. Job Fair website, and anytime organizations have a job fair, we want to post our information out there as well. Currently, we're going to post with VASPA, Virginia Association of School Administrations, so all of our jobs we posted that as well. And it just came out today, so I wanted to add that. Teachers Spotlight, what's your why? I'm working closely with my family engagement specialist, she's working with our teachers as to why they want to work for Prince Edward, so we're showcasing them on our social media sites as well. Additional platforms and resources, Troops to Teachers, have service members and veterans become teacher, certified teachers in K through 12 positions. So, I do know they have about 2,000 potential veterans who's in that pipeline as we speak, but they're looking for additional funding. Participate Learners is a global education program sponsored international teachers K through 12, and we have currently been working with them, and we have interviewed over 23 candidates for next year as well, through Educational Partners, I mean, for Participate Learners. Educational Partners is another third-party international teachers recruitment and placement service. VCU University Residency Program, we're currently working with them also to select, highly selective graduate teachers through their residency program. Longwood University Student Teacher applicants, we do have several student teachers here currently from Longwood University, and some have, I think two have already indicated they're looking to apply to work here next year. Longwood University SPAD Residency Program, just had a meeting last week with them with Dr. Wallace, talking with their five-year students in the special education program who will be actually can receive a provisional license to start working in the fall as well. Career Affairs, we have been busy. Educational Partners, again, Educational Partners, again, which is the international, uh, recruitment source. We did virtual interviews on February the seventh and February the ninth, and we interviewed forty-nine candidates. Career Fairs that has been attended thus far, Women Mary, Virginia State University, University of Lynchburg. Uh, we also had a career fair here on February the eighteenth in the middle school. Virtual hiring for all of Virginia, that was through Virginia, um, DEC website statewide. Old Dominion University, Bradford University, George Mason University today. To continue on, we have Longwood University, Pittsburgh Education Recruitment, um, fair, that's going to be virtual on March the twenty-third, and that's pre-K through twelve applicants as well. Liberty University, and we're also going to do another career fair on March the twenty-sixth, which is a Saturday from nine to twelve. And we're asking, you know, applicants to apply, so you can come in to meet administrators and do onsite intent letters for next year as well. Longwood University, April the seventh, that's going to be to be determined, because that is actually our spring break. I think I will book, but I will make sure someone is there. Our current status, we have interviewed over sixty-eight teacher applicants. Letters of intent to hire are being offered sooner. And to date, we have eighteen intent letters have been issued for next year. We're currently offering twenty-five hundred dollar sign-on bonuses, and they're offered to teachers coming in there if they're able to without, if they're not currently under contract, and also for next year. And we are continuously screening of applications and interviewing ongoing. Our next steps. We want to continue branding Prince Edward County Public Schools as a division of choice. We want to look at our benefits package, we want to share with them what we do offer. And technology in the classrooms, I know teachers, as we're interviewing, teachers are talking about technology, what do you offer? So we do share with them the technology resources that we do have. Instructional supports, onboard professional development, tuition reimbursement. We just received additional grant to help our provisionalized teacher, teachers to receive, um, um, actually provisionalized teachers to receive additional funding to get their classes paid for upfront. So those are some other things that we're doing right now to help our teachers, not only to come on board, but to stay here as well. So there's a lot of things that we're offering, and along with our benefits package, I do want to share with you that we do pay for license renewal. We had about twenty-five license renewals, and we're actually paying for our teachers, they do not have to come out of pocket for that. We're actually paying for their CPR, we pay for their CPR, um, CPR and first aid certification. So we are working with our teachers, we want to maintain them, we want to keep them here and attract them here as well. And that's all that I have.
We also pay for background checks.
Oh, yes, we do pay for all the background checks, fingerprints, um, Department of Social Services background check, and we also pay for their, um, tuberculosis testing as well. So they don't come out of pocket for anything.
What was the last thing?
TB, TB, TB tuberculosis.
I have a question.
Yes.
How does our benefit package stack up with the surrounding counties?
From what I've seen since I've been here, very compared, very competitive, um, very much in line. Um, I do notice that we do pay for additional things such as license renewals, we pay for first aid CPR, all the pre-employment services, insurance and health, very comparable. Health insurance, life insurance, um, all of that is very comparable to other divisions in Virginia that I've compared them to.
Okay, okay, comparable.
And I can say that based on completing a sheet as well. And I've shared this with Dr. Johnson, so she can kind of look at it before we publish it. So we talk about in our benefits package, tuition assistance, we currently pay up to seven hundred and fifty dollars per credit, per course. Um, health, dental and vision plan, vacation, we have vacation here, sick leave, life insurance, two times your annual salary, quadruple for accidental death. Um, VRS retirement, which is statewide, each division. Um, Family Medical League, which is federally funded, work miss compensation, jury duty, optional benefits, off- optional life insurance, um, and employee assistance program. So all of those are contributing factors to our benefits package, which is very comparable.
And if I may say, you received that sheet that, to which Ms. Eens Walton is referring in your budget packet. That's the sheet that she's holding up, it's, um, I think it's your second or third budget packet.
It's a quick glance of all of the benefits that we do offer, and they can compare, that can be compared to other divisions as well.
So of the eighteen that we have issued intent to hire letters to, how many have been signed and come back?
Well, cannot, they have intended, with intent letters, all eighteen have been sent back, but contracts cannot be issued until the budget has been approved.
Okay, so they are all saying at this point they are coming.
That's correct.
Uh, that's not binding at, until they sign a contract, is that correct? And so as soon as we sign a budget, we have issues then contracts to, uh, these people.
That's correct.
In terms of the benefits, and I totally get that they're comparable in terms of that we offer the same things. What I'm really interested in are how much the surrounding counties, we offer health insurance, they offer health insurance. How do our, uh, benefits compare premium-wise county to county? That's one I'm interested in. And number two is, yeah, our, uh, unfortunately, our reputation in the area, we have a lot more teachers leaving and going to surrounding counties than we have from surrounding counties to here. When you're interviewing these candidates, do you get questions about, this is what I've heard about Prince Edward County, and I can't, I mean, do you get?
The only question they have asked that I think is, um, they're repetitive, is about the resources, such as technology, support services, professional development, tuition assistance. I have not had one candidate.
Ask about that.
Ask about retention, retention or anything, how can that grow within Prince Edward?
Well, I hope that our budget includes the instructional coaches that will be at all three schools, and that will be hopefully something that you are able to really, especially with a brand new teacher or a career switcher.
Yes.
Um, that would be very comforting to them to know they are going to have that resource in schools, um, for them. So anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Farley?
Yeah, this made me a little bit, you know, off the wall, but, uh, when you, when you interview a candidate, particularly, uh, one from out of town, or is not familiar with the area, could you possibly include some of the amenities of Prince Edward? For example, uh, some of the things that we offer here that other counties don't have, like, uh, colleges, like, you said, and Longwood, recreation, uh, the numerous things that, uh, uh, people can do here for recreation.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the number of restaurants we have, uh, number of, you know, shopping opportunities that are available. And I know all of that can be found online, uh, but just as, you know, a part of the benefit package, just, you know, maybe include some of that information to, to make the area look more attractive.
Yes. It is shared during the interviews, um, and I will continue doing that as well. And I could say of the several candidates that we have hired, they have chosen other urban areas because of transportation and things of that nature. So we do try, and we do encourage and let them know that they're close in a small town, but you can get to Richmond and Lynchburg. But here, we have the state parks, we have the great restaurants, we have the colleges here, so you can. Yes, that is all shared.
And in fairness, Ms. Eens Walton is being very humble, she has already started, uh, a, a packet, if you will, a brochure, if you will, to be able to use as a recruiting tool, it's not ready at this point, but she has been working on it for a couple of months now. And, you know, talking to, uh, realtors and, and, because it's not just the food and the other amenities, it's also about housing. So she is working on that, uh, she did mention it, but she is, she is working on that. Again, it's not ready right now, but we hope to have it ready during this hiring season.
Yes, we will. Dr. Ger, I'm sorry.
Listen, every year we have, uh, make some teachers, some provisional licensed teachers. Do you have them to get a license? And if so, how many, uh, stay here to teach?
For provisional licensed teachers, uh, right now, we only have three. But hopefully with, um, some additional guidelines, they will be able to return, it has not been officially stated. Uh, but we are working on it as well, but right now, we only have three.
And also to answer your question, Dr. Ger, we, we do help those provisional teachers get their certification. We also pay for praxis or any other test that they have to take. So we do help them also get higher degrees.
Exactly.
Question.
Yes.
The, um, praxis testing, is that included in your benefit package?
Yes.
Great, that's a major.
It is.
Yeah, that's a major. Um, one other thing, have you been able to determine which one of the marketing recruitment strategies has been the most effective?
What has been the most effective? I'm going to say, it's been so many of them. I'm going to say the international teachers has been very effective. Um, Participate Learners, Education Partners, EPI. I do believe that our website has been very attractive, and Virginia Press. And the reason why I can say Virginia Press, because they can actually gauge and measure how many times our logo has been shared and clicked on, how many times our impressions have been clicked, and we can actually see how many teachers, educators has actually clicked on that link, whether via cell phone, internet, tablet, of that nature. So I do think Virginia Press is very helpful, and our website, our website has been very attractive. And I've noticed, um, lately that more applicants are applying. They may not qualify for everything, but they are applying and looking to come in the division.
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Just, just in that, we're gonna do like a five-minute break if you. And then we're gonna.
We might have to back off, like this year we kind of backed off of some PD because our teachers were overwhelmed and our teachers were feeling the impact of other things. And so we were like, let's just focus on what we need to focus on with our curriculum development and with our balanced assessment planning. So we adjust, we make adjustments for our teachers in according to what the data is telling us. Okay, and that's not just a teacher's opinion, that's backed by the data. Then how students are going to be remediated, so that's a big thing. So when we look at our data, we've talked about, for example, with the elementary school, some things that they might want to do to address that one to, one to two-year grade band, the grades one and two, with the way, what the data are saying. You guys have seen the benchmark data on that, and the other data looks similar. So we talked about how they can look at strand data, getting down to the granular level of the assessment to address the targeted needs of students. And then finally, again, what questions do we have? Which, which is from the previous slide, that's going to help inform future data digs. So that's our process overall, but before we go into questions, I'd like to just show you the, the actual data dig handbook, so to speak, or manual of our process. Mr. Acevedo, I think that's, I think it was shared with.
I assume you have a presentation, but for board members, it is if you look at executive content.
So it may, okay, so it's an executive content, so if you look at the-
Yes, you may have it as well, I don't know, but-
Okay, so if you look at the executive content, um-
It says division level data review process.
Okay, right.
So that's our manual, that's our, that is our, um, behind the scenes look at how we developed this process, what, like what goes into the PowerPoint. But what I want you to look at is about page, Dr. Johnson, help me because-
I will.
About page two or three, the graphic that has the division, school, and grade level.
That is on page two.
Okay, so on that page, you'll see that our data digs, we start with division level, and we've gotten really good this year at division level data digs, where we're looking at the kind of data that, that is that overall data. The next phase is the schools take that data back, and they talk about that data as, at the school level. So teachers are looking at data that is other teachers' data. So they're not just looking at their in-classroom data, they're looking at how the whole grade level is doing, or how the whole school is doing. And they are doing data digs following our data digs, they do school-wide data digs. And then they might also pull in different sources of data into their data digs. Curriculum things, textbook implementation, literacy plan at the elementary school, math plans at the elementary school, they're going to pull in different elements. And then the coordinators are there to support that work, but that is led at the school level. Further data digs are at the grade level, and this is where we have an area that we still need to work on, and this is grade level and content area. Because this is the level, and, and this is kind of the direction that we'll go for more intense focus for PD for next year. But that's the intervention level, that's the classroom level, that is really taking a hard look at how Johnny is doing on this SOL, this strand. And we're doing a little bit of that right now, but not to the degree that we need to do it. So we're not going to say that we're doing everything perfectly, there is still work to be done. But this is the process, we have been learning it this year, we wanted to share it with you so you can see the, the intensity of how we're looking at data and what we're, you know, what we're expecting administration and school staff, teachers, even instructional assistants can help inform our data, and their voice and, and opinion and their understanding of this data is very, very important. And a lot of what comes out of our data digs informs the work and the support provided by our instructional technology assistants, or instructional, like Mr. Acevedo, instructional technology resource teachers, we call them ITISs, innovation specialists. It informs the work and what our support that our coordinators provide are content and grade levels. So we have increased the number of content and grade level meetings that we're attending. It also informs some of the support provided by our instructional coaches that we have contracted with that are providing reading and math coaching. And so, you know, everything that we do around the data is being used to inform instructional decisions, which is one of the greatest accomplishments a division can do.
So again, we've always looked at data. This, though, is a formal process, so if someone were to ask, how does Prince Edward County make data-driven decisions? This is how we make data-driven decisions, this is our process. Again, based on DataWise, Harvard University, and if, if in your package you also have an executive content, you have two samples, we gave you a data dig sample one from January, and we also gave you a sample two, which is the, a high school example that includes some of the things that Dr. Wallace spoke about. For instance, if you go down, you see teacher attendance, you see, let's see, limiting criteria, so you see that we are looking at certain student groups.
So if-
There's another part that you mentioned.
If you, the one that Dr. Johnson's telling you, the high school example, is the school-level example, like that's, that's what the school presents to us-
Right.
-at the division meetings. And all schools are looking at all schools' data. So elementary, middle, and high are sitting together, they're looking at each other's data because what's happening in the elementary school is going to next year inform what's happening at the middle school, and that's going to inform what's happening at the high school. So it's important that we're all looking at the data and have a good understanding of each other's data. So that's the division level meeting, and so what you have is just the high school example of the last data dig. The other example that's in there is our, what that data dig meeting looks like. So that is our agenda, you can see it's very structured, it is very timed. There's a time there, and for that time, the schools each have an allotted amount of time to present their data. And then from that data, we talk about what are the next steps? And then at the end of the meeting, we think about the trends that have occurred through all three data meetings, each school. And then we think about what are some data, division level next steps that we need to do to support teachers? And so, it's kind of hard to envision until you've gone through the whole process, but if you just think about it in, you know, in terms of, you know, all three schools and all division-level administrators are coming together, at least quarterly. We're looking at each school as presenting their data. And from that data, we are talking about what supports we can provide to the schools, whether it's through professional development, or it's instructional meetings, attending their PLC meetings, their professional learning community, community meetings. And then, that happens at the division level. Then they take that process and they replicate it again at their school level, where they're just looking at their school-level data with all of their teachers, including resource teachers, other content areas, not just English, math, science, history. And then, they take this process, and this is where we really need to work, and develop that, or look at the school level, I mean, excuse me, the grade level or the content area. We've done a little bit of that this year, but that's really, um, an area where we need to continue to grow. We had to get this process solidified at the division level, and then that transfers to the school level, and then that will transfer to the grade level. And this has been a year, kind of in the making, to get to the point that we are now. So we wanted to just give you an idea of what we're doing to look at data, how we look at data, how we question what we're seeing about the data, and how we make instructional decisions. Are there any questions? Dr. Gurr?
Yeah. One or two years ago, all the school board members are invited, were invited to the elementary school, to, to observe. Okay, that's, they presented a lot of good data, okay, so for number, for this class, for the, for number, basically based on the SOL test or benchmark test. So, and over there, we can see, for, for number, for the class A, for the math, so they can see which students, which is at which level. And they even colored it, so it's green, yellow, red, something like that, okay? So at that time, my feeling was, oh, well, it's needed a lot of improvement because we saw a lot of red, now the, um, some yellow and a few green, so I, I saw that we needed to improve. I think that kind of data is pretty good, you know? And so what is, you, when you give the presentation, it's yours, it's division-wide, you hear just, just, just compare with the different years. So I think, from those data, so we can see our weakness, our strength, so we can see how to improve it.
Yes, sir. That's exactly what we do.
Other questions for Dr. Wallace? Yes, sir.
Where, where are we now in that process? Are we in, have we made it to the grade level? Yeah?
We have, in some cases, yes, yes, definitely. So what they, one of the things that we've been working on this year, so we use a, a product called Performance Matters. Performance Matters is the testing platform for our benchmark assessments, but it's also a hub for holding other data. So, um, you know, it's kind of like your, I'm going to use a doctor analogy again. Your primary care physician gets reports from your other doctors, right? If you go to specialists, they get the report, they send it to your primary care physician. That's what Performance Matters does. They get the reports sent to them from other programs that we have selected. And then we can look at that data. So for example, just like what you tried, what you were describing, Dr. Gurr, is, you looked at their benchmark data, and you might look at their star data, and their attendance data, and their discipline data, and that's coming all into one hub. That hub is Performance Matters. And so our grade levels are then taking that data, and they're looking at what those students are doing across the grade level. They're also looking at, for example, when we do benchmarks, you guys see the data at the overall level, but the grade levels can look at it by strand, and they can determine which questions are giving students a hard time to answer. They can look at the strand and tell which strands, and actually in the high school example, they pointed out, for example, three specific strand areas that have been problem areas across the SOL test. So that strand data is then informing what the grade level needs to do to improve. And we have seen some of that, as evidenced by our high school SOL data, of where they have looked at that data and put some interventions in place at the classroom level. And then that has improved their SOL scores, that's what we saw in the fall.
Mr. Farley, Dr. Gurr?
This is a very comprehensive and a very beneficial process that I think is going to be tremendously helpful with the right leadership. It's going to take a great deal of time, a great deal of work on the administrators to get to people that are in the trenches to administer this process for the strands for us to improve. Now, my question is, several years ago, or several months ago, maybe a year or two, we got a coach from the State Department to come down and work with us to help us improve so that we can become fully accredited. Is that coach still working with us? And is this process something that he is on board with? Something that he has recommended, or she, or something that they are, are in agreement with?
So, two years ago, let's talk pre-COVID. Pre-COVID, the officer-school quality was different. Their organizational structure was different, and we had contractors who were a part of the division, and I, I don't remember when you came on the board or not, but they're, they were very different than our executive liaison now. So the person to whom you are referring now, now, is our executive liaison, and that was Dr. Cox, who did a presentation for you all earlier this year. And now it's Dr. Sammy Shields, both of whom are, were, well, Cox was, and Dr. Shields is very on board with this process. And yes, this process is multi-layered, but I have to say that our administrators have embraced it, and that their meetings with their teachers are very, very positive. And they put, we put the data out there to everyone, and it's not to hurt anyone's feelings or anything like that, that's not what this is about. This is strictly about student achievement, where everybody knows this is where we are, and this is what we need to do for improvement. So not only are our liaisons on board with this, but this is the process that we developed for the State Department. And they are, I have to say, very pleased with our progress because I include the data dig information on the agendas. You can, I included for you all as well, you can click on it to see. So we talk about our process and our data and what we're doing with the State Department. So yes, everybody is on board with this.
In fact, the Harvard program, the DataWise program that's out of Harvard was a recommendation from the DDOA.
Yes.
And we modified it to fit Prince Edward, because it's a much deeper process than, um, it's, it's a, it's a, the DataWise process in itself, the way it's written, is a lot deeper than the process that we have, actually. It's, um-
It's a little too much, actually, for us.
When, when we get to that point, we'll be able to take student work and look at it and analyze it in that way, but we're not to that point yet.
Dr. Gurr?
In turn, how does that come back to the school board? And how, you know, the, after you've done the data, data dig, how does it come back up to us for governance?
So the presentations that Dr. Wallace does for you, a lot of that is what is included. We felt that what we were presenting to you is, is standard data, but we wanted you to understand and to know that we do a lot more than what we present. So some of it is school-specific and doesn't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily need to come to the board, it's something that we need to deal with more internally. But we wanted you to know, and we wanted you to see, that this is what's happening behind the scenes. So what comes back to the board typically has been, here are the scores, this is what we're doing about it, and then we keep moving. But this is very detailed, this gets down to the administrator level, because sometimes it prompts questions for me, to the administrators specifically, or from Dr. Wallace, and then the administrators take it back to the teachers. And we don't bring you, we don't bring you the teacher-level stuff unless it's, we feel like it has impacted the total division. So an example of that would be attendance during COVID. If that has, if that has an instructional impact, then I bring it to you and I tell you that this is a problem and this is a concern. But otherwise, no, like, if this is, if there's a specific problem, like if you go through this, if there's a specific problem with attendance or scores with a specific department, say, in the high school, then that's something that I talk about with the principal, it's not something that's going to rise to the board. So we wanted to show you, however, all of the things that we look at. Does that make-
It does.
Yep. I want to comment.
All right.
Mr. Farley, I 100% agree with you that, I, I think this is, I mean, I applaud how much of this has already been implemented at the division level and at the school level under a pretty difficult, a pretty difficult year, to say the least. But in order for it to be 100% successful and for it to really get the impact that I think we all want, Mr. Farley is right, it's now at that teacher level that is going to require, and I, I'm, I'm not, and I'm sure, and I appreciate that the administrators are on board and have been talking to their teachers, but, you know, that is really, they, they don't have time to sit in a grade level meeting with the English teachers at the high school, or the math teachers at the high school, or the history teachers at the high school, and guide them through a data dig. And so I, I, I'm hoping and praying that we can provide at each school that level of support next year for coaching, and, because that's, otherwise it, the division can talk about the data all day long, but if the teachers aren't implementing the changes in their classroom that the data indicate need to be changed, it, it usually doesn't matter much.
I think, and, and you're, you're exactly right, don't get me wrong, we have done some of that.
Oh, I know, yeah, oh, I know you have, I know, I know you have.
I have sat in, Mr. Walker has sat in, all of the coordinators have sat in to those grade level meetings. What we need to improve is the frequency of those meetings and the regular culture around a data talk.
Yes, yes.
So, but-
There's not just smiling and nodding going on.
But the process had to be established first.
Sure, sure.
And, and while data has been looked at in the past, in many forms, I've seen it, you know, prior to this process, this gives the focus that teachers will need to have those discussions because it gives them the template, it gives them the questions, and it gives them, you know, a standard set of questions so they stay on task and don't diverge to topics that really aren't going to make an impact in their student life. So this process, but we had to, you know, you can't just go out and give this process to teachers without the coaching and the teaching, or it will fail completely. And so we had to get that culture at this division level first, just under, looking at each other's data. While individual schools were looking at data, you know, they might look at overall data, but they weren't looking at the data the way that we're looking at it now as a division-level team. So, you know, that's, it's part of the culture of building that process, it does take time.
And I also, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, but I think, I mean, we're ready for that, we're, we're on that path.
And I, we also are looking at how we use the time that we have. So Dr. Wallace mentioned, for instance, a, a team meeting. We don't have time to get off on extra. We are staying very, very focused, and it's written and it's in front of people, so it helps us to stay focused. So during our PLCs, we talk about data, not every single one, but we talk about data. On those Tuesdays, our teachers stay an extra hour on Tuesdays. We talk about data, we don't all have to be together for a meeting, so we separate and we talk about data, so we're looking very, very carefully at how we use the time that we already have, so that that time becomes more productive. So periodically, we will include, not necessarily discuss in depth, but we'll include just some notes from some of our data digs. We, more than likely, will include the end-of-the-year data dig, because that usually includes our SOL data, et cetera, so we'll include that in the packet, depending on the timing, we will. Other questions? Thank you, Dr. Wallace.
Thank you.
So that trend, awesome, so, so that transitions us to the, the next piece of this, which is the memo about the CAP. Oftentimes, when you look at my memos, I'll refer to the data digs. Well, now you've seen what, what I'm actually talking about when I talk about the data dig. In reference to your question, Mr. Farley, Dr. Sammy Shields is our, as I said, our new liaison, I met with him today for several hours. We talked about some of the things that we've talked about today. We continue to talk about our graduation efforts, we continue to look at the benchmark data, SOL data, attendance data. So this, these are normal, regular topics. I meet with Dr. Shields twice a month, usually every two weeks, to discuss these types of, of issues and concerns and areas of growth for us. So, overall, that, that is what we have done on March 9th, as I said. He was here in preparation for the March 14th meeting. So I have another meeting with the state, that meeting includes our division-level team, which includes all of our coordinators and Dr. Wallace. And this time, it will probably include Ms. Eens Walton, too, because there's a piece about HR that we want to discuss because we have an HR consultant from the state. So it will probably include her as well. You also should have, and I think you have the empty, uh, agenda, it says agenda only, but I have since completed that agenda and will go back and, and put in artifacts. But you've seen this before, where I include the artifacts for some of the things that they are asking for. The only reason you don't have the updated version is because the updated version was due Monday. Your board docs were due, well, we put out board docs Wednesday, I believe it was, so everything had not been completed, but I will, I will swap these out so that you can see the artifacts that we included, some of which we've already talked about. One of the other pieces that's in your executive content, and I keep pulling my glasses off and on here, you see the CAP progress matrix? So this is where we have decided where we are, if you, if you pull up that matrix, we did this in November, this is not something that we shared with you. We did it and shared it with the state, so it is in one, it actually is in the November agenda. And then we did it again this month to see where we think we are as far as implementation is concerned, and you see this scale down at the bottom. We continue to work, the goal is by this time next year, everything will be operational. But you will see these essential actions in our corrective action plan. Monday, we will discuss with the Office of School Quality where they think we are based on the artifacts that we have provided to them. So we did it twice, because we did it in November, and just to be current, we did it again. Our executive liaison, our previous executive liaison, Dr. Cox, he did it in November with us, November December, he did his in December. And we will meet on the 14th with the OSQ, Office of School Quality, to see where they think we are. And I will share that information as well. Other questions for Dr. Johnson? Got it? Okay. We're going to go to number 13, calendar, Dr. Johnson? Okay, this is intercession week. The March 15th, I, I want to draw your attention to number two. That's a school superintendent budget presentation to the Board of Supervisors. That's usually where we all get together, both, both boards, and we look at what we're proposing. We are in the process of, we still do not have a budget, a conference budget. I have a budget from the Senate, one from the House, they all, and then, of course, we have Governor Northam's, a previous Governor Northam's budget. And they, they look very different, some include school construction, some don't include school construction. There are about a million dollars difference between some of them. So I'm going to call Mr. Stanley to discuss this date because we need real numbers when we're talking about both, when we're talking about the budget and what we're really asking for. The priority for the budget remains the same, that we are looking at the salary scales, we are looking at the raises, so that total, that was 6%. We're looking at supports, not really additional staff, staff, really, not, you know, maybe one teacher that we talked about, the Spanish teacher for the elementary school. But we have to figure out right now, and that's what we're trying to do, how much is all of this going to cost, and is there going to be any supplement for salaries, salary supplements? So I believe it's the House of the Senate, I get them confused, this one proposed a 4% salary increase, one proposed a 5% salary increase. We have to figure out, they have to tell us, which one is it going to be so that we make sure that we include it? How is that going to impact our, our sal, our adjusted salary scales with 1%? That's already built into our adjusted salary scale. It's become, it's problematic because it's a lot of money. So we are still working on that. I don't feel it beneficial to do a presentation with this very large number that will then establish a perspective so that when we come back with the real numbers-
It might not be the same.
It might not be the same, it might be much lower, but there's already a mindset because we've come out with this astronomical number- we've come out with this astronomical number. So I am concerned about that, that particular date, and so I want to draw your attention to it, because I am going to have a discussion with Mr. Stanley about whether or not that's going to be productive time. I also would like to meet with this board prior to, once we get the conference, and we figured out all that we can do to have a discussion with the board, this board, before taking it to the Board of Supervisors.
I agree.
And usually, they're so close that I don't have to have that meeting, I can just send it to you and say, this is what we're presenting. But that's not the case this year. So, I want to draw your attention to that, please hold the date, but it may not be with the Board of Supervisors, so please hold the date. The end of the third nine weeks is fast approaching, next week. So I want to draw your attention to that. The March 23rd budget work session, usually, we present, and we're so close with our numbers, that the board will approve what I'm going to formally present to the Board of Supervisors, well, we're not there yet, and I don't know what's gonna happen. I believe Saturday is the end of the general session
Yes.
in Richmond, so I don't know if they're gonna come out with a number, or in a conference budget for schools or not. So I also don't know what's going to happen to that date, so I just, again, want, just draw your attention to it. April, go into April, 4th through 8th, that's spring break. I do also want to talk, well, mention, it's not on this list, but I believe it's March 21st, the Department of Labor will make a decision, well, we're anticipating, we are anticipating, that I believe it's March 21st, 21st or the 24th, that they will, they call it DOLI, will make a decision about masks and staff. I had a conversation today with, I say I, superintendents in this region, the Piedmont Health District Region. We met with Dr. Allman, and I very directly asked the question, right now, we are fine with our masks, I want to wait until DOLI comes out with their recommendation or their mandate, so that there's no confusion, and to bring that recommendation along with CDC, and so that we are aligned, because right now, it is not as clear as I need it to be before there's decision making. So if DOLI says that we can be in the workplace without our mask, then that's what we will do, if they say it's up to the boards, whatever the case may be, I want consistency, so you can expect communications from me around that, once that decision has been made. Okay? And that's, again, not going to be on your calendar, but that is what we want to do. So any questions about anything on the calendar?
Any questions? So you'll let us know about that?
Yes.
15th, March 15th day?
Yes, we, yes.
But next weekend.
Yes, it's next week. Everything is really tightly packed, so again, just hold the date, I'm not sure what it's going to look like.
The budget, so essentially, the budget schedule is just, so it's really tentative, it's not, we're not really able to go by that.
Hold all the dates?
Okay.
Because if it comes out this weekend, clearly, we'll be working on it this weekend. Still may not be able to hit this particular date for a joint board meeting, but maybe a board meeting just for our board, so that's why I'm asking you to still hold the date. But yes, the calendar is going to need to be adjusted.
The gentleman's presentation today on the tax referendum, is there anything that we need to be doing as far as contacting our supervisors for the money for renovations or?
We are working, I am working, and the Board of Supervisors, along with representatives from this board, we are still working on what is the, what is the next thing, how are we going to address school construction? Part of that has to do with grants, because there are some grants that are coming out, and part of it has to, at the end of the day, the conference budget, is it going to include school construction and how much? So I would say, not right now, other than, we can continue to call, you can continue to do that, you can continue to petition, but the more productive action, I think, at this point, is to look at what can be Plan B.
Right.
What can be Plan B?
And then, the
And we're doing that.
And the other question, Joe Hines, his presentation on the rowing?
Yes.
Is there anything that we need to be doing as far as figuring that into the budget at this point?
Uh, no, not at this point, we don't have to figure that in, he made a substantial, I think it was about $10,000 donation to us, for our rowing program, to develop a rowing program. Mr. Kane and the high school are definitely working on that, so no. That won't impact us.
And as I know, from, from, as, considered here, 30, okay, so either provide about $547 million dollars, to have us to borrow $2 billion dollars, okay, but now $2 billion dollars is still not enough, okay? And right now, I contacted with some board supervisor, and then they mentioned that they prefer to use the state money, federal money to fix our roof leak, and they, they don't like to use the, to increase the property tax, because, right, last year, we lost the WFO, and we also lost the pirate company, so that's what I heard, I don't know what it will be. So either, he, Mr. Bakerly suggests us to have a plan to fix our roof leak, so I don't know what he means, I don't understand, he may, so we may have to scale down, okay, don't renovate it, just we don't have enough money, or don't renovate, or just fix, comprehensively fix the, but that's, we don't know yet.
We don't, and to that, we will do some repairs to our roof, because we need to, now, but it is my position, and for those that I've talked to, we're not going to give up on renovations, and so, even though the referendum may not have, or the bill may not have passed this year, we will come back to it next year as well. Like you said, as long as we keep fighting and keep moving for this, it's for our children, it's the best idea, but we will do some roof repairs. Some of that will come from some of the capital improvement monies that we gave back, that they gave back to us, so some of that will.
But the question is, will a roof repair help us at all? Because there is mold in the school, and kids cannot be, none of us can be around mold, it's very dangerous. And what was told by the president over there, that once it gets patched up, what happens is they're going to find another way to go through the problem.
Yes.
We have roof on top of roof on top of roof, we've got millions of dollars over there. Now, this boy didn't try, the boy tried, as I've been saying right here, try to repair, but each time, it's not fixed.
We have to have, to answer your question, we have to have a stopgap measure, because we cannot have water coming through the ceiling, which still happens, and you are absolutely right, we fix this, because we patched over years, we fix this, then it goes somewhere else, but we really, I don't see where we have a choice.
My concern is the mold, that mold must be cleaned up. It's very dangerous, ducks in here, no, I'm telling you, dangerous for children's health, and, and
And it's all about here.
Anybody there, so it's not just the roof.
Right.
We have to address the mold, we put in that position, that's what we have to do. But I'm hoping that, I heard, I looked at the council meeting, the board meeting last night, and then tend to fight, that's what we're saying.
Absolutely.
And I looked in the newspaper, where the governor's talking about school districts making a loan.
Just put down nervous talking right there.
I saw that already, so I think that we have to think about this, because we're not going to throw money, good money out the bed, we're not gonna do that.
And that's what Dr. Gird, that's what you were mentioning, the loans. Just another note on that, Friday, I believe it's 1 o'clock, Ms. Womack and Ms. Carson and the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors, and two members of the Ad-Hoc Committee, along with Mr. Stanley, myself, Mr. Good and Ms. Jones, will meet to start reviewing the RFPs for
Oh, okay.
the architectural construction. Because we're gonna keep moving, and we have the money.
They talked about, yeah.
With, I'm sorry.
We're gonna pretend we have the money.
We're gonna pretend we have the money and we're going to keep moving, but we will, we will provide the templates for judging and deciding, and we'll start that process, because, again, I told, I think I told you, we had five people, or five companies, and we will, we meet Friday to start distributing them, reviewing them, and then we'll create a schedule for when we'll come back, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Board members, comment?
I wanted to thank all of you who were at, who attended the Southern Region meeting yesterday, appreciate that, it was virtual, and it was a good meeting, and we had a lot of information from the legislative part of Virginia School Board Association, and he talked a lot about the budget and how far apart the two houses were, coming up with a budget. He also talked about some of the, one, like the Senate had a 5% increase for teachers, but the House had a 4% plus the bonus, I think it was that, it was some kind of that, that's what, one of those house, one of the differences they have. And school construction, like Dr. Gird said, they said, that they both have like $500 million there, but how you go about getting it for your school, I don't think that's been quite worked out. He also talked about bills that have been passed, bills that are related to public education, and bills that were pending, and bills that had failed, and he was, he said that there, you know, it didn't happen this year, but you need to keep, keep pushing, you try again next year, and the referendums are there, so try again next year, but don't stop, keep pushing.
Yes, I wasn't there too.
Yes, he was there. And then
They, I'm sorry, they just mentioned about the charter school, and the laboratory school, they said that right now, this kind of bills were all failed, so it's, why it is failed, is because there are two parties, the House controls, and Republicans control the House, Democrats controls the Senate, that's how it's fighting. But right now, they will keep fighting, next year and the year after now, so, so basically, it's a demand of, who will control the Senate, even the Republicans controls both chambers, so probably charter school will expand. That's what I heard.
I'm still two minutes ahead, so let us in here about the Legacy Education Center.
Yeah, yes.
I was gonna come to that, we'll look for that.
So Ms. Womack, and as well as Dr. Pride, the head of the, the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, went to a workshop presentation
In Charlotte County.
in Charlotte County regarding the Legacy Education Center, and she wanted to know more about that and how we could use it, whether or not it'd be beneficial for us. So we had done the initial contact with them, we have a position of Career Pathways, I can never remember the exact title, but a career pathways
What's it called, Dr. Wallace?
Career Connections.
Thank you. Career Connections Administrator, and this is something that would fit into that process around Career Connections. What we have not done yet, we've done our initial research or our initial contact, but we haven't figured out yet just how that's going to work with our program. But I wanted to share the information with you, just as for, with everyone, because you, we had talked about it privately, and so I wanted to share it with everyone.
And I understand, they've been around for a very long time.
Yes.
So various counties, including Charlotte County, also a member of this consortium.
Yes.
And when I attended, Dr. Pratt was there also, the supervisor from Charlotte County was there, Board of Education Minister was there, other community members in Charlotte County were there, and they talked about the life skills, academics for children, 12th grade, how they entered into employment, talked about community involvement, and they also talked about, there was a student who they had helped, and this pastor was there for his church, church congregation was also at that meeting. And this young man got to speak, he was dynamic, he really was, and talked about where he had been prior to coming into this program, and where he is now, and looking forward to the future, and getting ready to go to college, but he also was in workforce. So they really did a lot of help with him, they did a lot of things with him. The pastor came up and gave, wanted to get my card, but I didn't have the card to give her and bring with me. But they were all excited about that in Charlotte County, beneath County, all the counties around the area are involved, and I thought maybe, we can discuss this as a board, to see whether or not we're interested in doing something like that, with some of our students, 12th grade, it may not be good as well as it could be.
And so, our Career Connections Administrator, as I said, he made very positive contact with the founder, and has discussed it, but we have not collectively, administratively talked about how it fits yet into our program, but, but we're on, we're moving towards it, so I just wanted to share updates, and that was it.
I was hoping that we'd have a meeting with him to come and make a presentation to talk about it.
Probably in a few months.
Must have been his guy, yes, must have been his guy, because I think it's what he's looking at, looking into.
It's kind of weird. I, I, one last thing, I was put on the Governor's School Board, and knew nothing about it, so I really invited myself, and she was, Mrs. Swain was so lovely and invited me to come, I spent the morning there this morning, asked a lot of questions about Governor's School, got to visit classes, it was wonderful to be back in classrooms. I was concerned, or questioned, why Prince Edward County only has eight slots, as opposed to every other county that participates has 10, 11, 12 slots. I, A, wondered if it was lack of interest, but I don't think so, B, was it money, which I think it probably is so. And so what I'd like to know is, how many students, how many juniors applied this current year? Because we only get really four slots, which, four slots, that's not very many out of a class of 100 and something, if we have the interest. And
In the past, it was an interest thing.
Okay, that we just don't have enough kids that want to do it?
In the past, it's been probably three or four years ago, when we were cutting back.
Well, then, if that is the case, I think we gotta start in kindergarten. In terms of encouraging our children to reach high, now, I get it, it's, you gotta go, get up early, and ride the bus, or you gotta be there at 8 o'clock, and it's 30 minutes from here, but what I saw going on in those classrooms was pretty amazing. And, and so I'd just like to know how many people apply for it, because it would be heartbreaking if we had 10 apply, and we can only take four kids, even if all 10 met all the qualifications to go. And that would be just a shame, and so, you know, if somebody is a senior and drops out, we might get five the next year, but we, but historically, it's four, because we only have eight slots, four for juniors, and then four for seniors, so, but I had a wonderful morning, she was so lovely, and I learned a lot about it, and anyway, so I just wanted to say.
That's great, that's good.
Um, so I listened last night on the phone, and I'm not sure I heard correctly, but did our high school but did our high school art win second place?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I wanted to acknowledge that.
Yes, I was, that was, I know, know here.
We were going to invite him to the next presentation, to the next board meeting. I'm looking to see if this is the book I have his name in, but-
Edward.
Yes, one of our high school students.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
I think they're in second place in the art con.
Yes.
And my other thing was a question on the VSB A business honor roll. I know that we addressed it, did we vote? Does he come, did we vote?
On the Gemini one? Um, yeah.
Okay, excuse me.
I'm just double checking, but, um. Uh, yes, we did, uh, we did that. Any other comments?
Doug, did you listen last night?
No.
Basically, he said this deal with localities raising the taxes was dead for the year. That's the bottom line this year. He would ask if there's anything else we can do. Apparently not this year.
Yep.
Any other board comment?
It's general correspondence, there's nothing else particularly unusual.
All right. Can we move on?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, will we make? Yes, make your recommendations?
I recommend that the board accept the personnel list as presented and that we do not release teacher, teachers A and B until we have found a replacement, a simple replacement.
Second.
All the favors? All right. Nothing else? I need a motion to adjourn?
I just said-
To his head, okay. Motion to adjourn, all right, you're good. All right, all the favors?
Doug, you're seconded.
All right, okay, thank you, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your-